Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the St. Peter School Board. It is Wednesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We are in the governor's room at the community center. We'll call the meeting to order. First item up, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys nailed it. All right, consider any requests to speak. Kimberly. All right. Next up, we need to approve the consent agenda, which is in the board book packet online and in front of you. Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Consider adopt the regular agenda first.
I so moved.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Now we'll do approval of consent agenda. Motion in a second, any discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, consent agenda is approved. Next up is our student spotlight. Ms. Cora has Odin here.
Sure do.
Mr. Brewer.
You wanted to spotlight early with that pledge of allegiance.
Yeah.
Loud and proud, I love it.
You do. Should we move this down for you? Can you hear Odin okay? All right, well, this is Odin Brewer. And he's a first grader at South Elementary in Ms. Alderman's class. Right? Okay, so I'm gonna read what Ms. Alderman emailed me after she heard that I picked Odin. She said, "I'm so glad you picked Odin. Odin comes to school every day with a bright smile and a very kind heart. He is the kindest student who recognizes others' emotions and acts on them. He's often the first to give a friend a hug if they are sad or help when he sees a need, and I can attest to that being true. He takes action right away and always shows his best work. Academically, he's engaged and has a clear passion for learning. My favorite story about him comes from the first couple of days of school when he asked if he could read chapter books during playtime." Did you do that?
Yes.
But she's just really excited that he's here and was chosen to be honored tonight, and so am I. So Odin is smiling all the time, just like this. And he is always saying hello to adults and kids in the building by name, just a really good friend. So speaking of names, who did you bring with you tonight? Can you introduce your family?
Mom, Dad, and my sister Raven.
Yeah, and how old is Raven?
She is nine.
She's in fourth grade, right? Yeah. So she's over at North with Mr. Doherty. So, um, can you tell me about your favorite thing at school? What do you like to do at school, Odin?
Play with my friends.
Play with your friends. What do you like to play the most?
Tag.
Tag at recess, yes. You're running all over, aren't you? Mm-hmm. What about in the imagination stations? Do you have a favorite thing there?
The restaurant.
The restaurant. What is the role that you play? Are you the server or are you the one ordering the food?
Server.
The server. I could see you being a good server. Mm-hmm. Um, can you tell me what your favorite thing to learn about is?
U fly.
U fly. Do you guys know what U fly is? Does anybody know? Well, you tell them. What is U fly? What do you learn about?
Consonant digraphs.
Right now, you're learning about consonant digraphs. Does anybody know what that is? What is a consonant digraph? I told you they wouldn't know.
Two letters come together to make one sound.
Yeah, okay, so what's an example? What are you learning about right now?
Um, N-K.
N-K, what does that sound like?
Nk.
Yep, yep. The one that you told me about when we talked earlier was C-H. Sounds like ch, yep. So we're learning about consonant digraphs. And this is, this comes back to that read act stuff, right? So Odin's very engaged, which I love. Is there a difference between kindergarten and first grade? What do you think the big difference is?
In first grade, you do harder stuff than kindergarten.
Harder stuff. Is that okay with you? You like the challenge? Of course you do. Um, we also talked about character strong and purposeful people. What is our theme this month?
Gratitude.
Gratitude in November. Perfect for Thanksgiving, right? Um, what's something that you're grateful for?
Friends and family members.
Of course, yes. Yeah, and that makes sense knowing that you love to play with your friends and you're glad your family is here tonight. Mm-hmm. Um, what do you like to do when you're not at school? Can you tell these adults?
I like to jump in waves with Raven.
Oh, play with your sister outside. I love that.
And put out decor- Christmas decorations to mommy and daddy.
Nice. You're ahead of the game back there. I'm impressed. All right. Well, thanks for telling us a little bit about you. I'm just, I'm super proud of Odin. He's doing a great job this year. Would you mind if they asked some questions?
No.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll ask a question. I gotta think what my question's gonna be. I have to ask a question. Okay, what's your favorite season? Like, spring, summer, fall, or winter?
Winter.
Winter? What do you like about winter?
Snow.
Snow? Do you do something in the snow that you like?
I like building snowmen and burying my sister.
Oh, I love that. Sounds fun. We went with your sister, it sounds like it. That's impressive. Any other questions for Odin?
I think it's so exciting that you're reading chapter books.
What are some, what's your favorite book that you're reading right now?
Right now, Dogman.
Ooh, I love Dogman.
Good choice. All right. Students have been bringing us tests. Maybe we should've. No. A test on digraphs.
I don't even know if I want the first grade test these days.
Maybe next time we'll bring a digraph test. All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Odin, for coming. Thank you, Odin.
Good job, Odin.
Well, we can't top that. But let's try with some action items. First item up is to consider acceptance of gifts, donations, and grants. Dr. Graff.
All right, we have seven items to accept this evening. If the board's okay with it, I'll just go ahead and read through those items. Uh, so the first one is a donation in the amount of a hundred and twenty dollars made in memory of Amanda Neuser. Uh, she served as a special education prayer professional in the MVAD autism program at North, and that money will be used to support the media center. Next is a grant for the amount of five hundred dollars that was awarded to Seth Putz, operations and maintenance supervisor during the Mass Miss Conference, and that grant is to be used toward building new grounds. Next is a donation in the amount of four thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-four cents that was received from Steve and Yvonne Niels and is to be used for St. Peter Athletics Department. Then we have a donation in the amount of two thousand five hundred and, I'm sorry, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and nine cents uh, from Bill and Deb Dixon, and that donation will help cover the cost of extracurricular choir trips and special events for students at St. Peter High School Choir Program. Next is a donation in the amount of two thousand dollars was made by Ken and Patsy Rosso, and this donation is to go toward the SPPS Angel Fund to support students in need. And then we have a donation from the St. Peter Booster Club for twenty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents, and that was made to the school district for transactions that were approved previously to reimburse. And then lastly, we have a donation in the amount of fifty-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars uh, from area businesses for the premier partners program. So I would recommend that we accept these gifts, donations, and grants as presented.
Also moved.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Is there like a process that goes out for like thank yous on these and things?
Yep.
Okay.
So each individual will get a letter from the district office. We're incredibly thankful for all the donations.
Is there usually like, I mean, obviously the reason we get them, but are there like annual, I mean, I'm just curious, like, because there's a lot of them this month. Or, and I'm, obviously some of them, but like, are there usually letters with them that says like the reason? I mean, obviously some might be from a funeral or something like that, but...
Uh, so in the, um, the packet, there'll be a little bit more information about them in the memos that come with each one.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. If not, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much to our generous donors. Item two, consider approval of agreement with St. Peter Food Service. Dr. Graff.
So the negotiations team has reached an agreement with St. Peter Food Service for the twenty-five through twenty-seven contract years. The notable changes in that agreement are a two percent and a four point one percent total package increase, a forty cent and a fifty percent increase on the salary schedule, and then the addition of paid holidays and increases to the career increment schedule. Uh, and then there were also increases to insurance contributions by the district. Uh, anything to add from the H.R. Committee?
The Food Service Group is kind of a different group because they represent themselves. They do not have a union rep there. And so it's, it's a nice change of pace in negotiations. Get along with them very well. I'd have to say that, uh, they're a pleasure negotiating with.
I'll move since I'm the chair. I'll move.
Perfect. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
It's a very congenial group to work with. As all of our bargaining has been thus far, and we certainly want to continue that trend.
Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Master agreement with Food Service is approved. Thank you. Thank you to the negotiations committee as well. Next up, consider approval of a resolution supporting the district's application for a grant from the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Dr. Graff and Mr. Rorcasie.
Yeah, so the Minnesota State High School League, uh, awards grants to school districts to help in lowering the cost for students whose, uh, income shows, or families' income shows that they have that need. Uh, the application has already been submitted.
Yes.
Um, but we are looking for formal approval for that process to move forward. And she is here to give us a little more, answer any questions.
Yeah, it's the same thing we've gone through yearly, but it just allows, um, Minnesota State High School League has, um, been able to take the money that they get from taxing, um, state tournament tickets and put it into a grant, and then that money gets, um, donated back to schools for these causes and other, um, grants that people or schools can apply for. Um, and so it just helps with replenishing our scholarship fund so we can allow students to participate without charging if they need that, that assistance. So this is just to, um, notify the school board that we've applied for it and then, and in order to be approved from the High School League, we have to obviously go through this process, so.
Following the resolution.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Discussion or questions?
Don't, are they somewhat comparable to last year?
Um, they're a little bit higher, um, but they should be pretty comparable to years past. We've just continued to have more and more students involved as well, which is just gonna increase that number.
And that's a good thing.
That's a very good thing, absolutely. Yep, so. Um, but it is a little bit higher than, um, than I think what we ended with last year, so hopefully we get a little bit more of that pot to, um, put back in our...
Exactly. Thank you.
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none will proceed to vote. This is a resolution. Uh, so we will go around the table. Ms. Rosback.
Aye.
Mr. Rosso.
Aye.
Ms. Dewey.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Count.
Aye.
Mr. Dixon.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion carries. All right. Resolution is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for working on the application, Mr. Rorcasie. Next up, consider approval of the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Report. Ms. Engeldinger.
This is the, the report that everybody looks forward to every year, I think. I can see by the look on your face, Charlie. Um, I, last year, I believe, I explained that, uh, the World's Best Workforce Report was getting a name change to what we lovingly call CACR. So much so that we have to look up what it's actually called every time I'm going to talk about this. Um, you have, actually, you have three. I apologize. Um, what was in the board book, uh, has been updated because we wanted to include the goal areas that we're actually working on this year. This report always feels a little bit funny because we're just talking about last year only in the report. Um, but after meeting with our, we have, um, there are several steps in this process. We have an advisory committee, um, where we meet and talk about, talk about last year's goals and how we did on them, and then we get their input in setting goals for the current school year. So I believe Kimberly kindly ran, um, additional copies of the updated, um, goals sheet for you. It's just a quicker cheat sheet than talking through this whole thing. Um, so if we go through last year's goals, uh, you'll notice goal area five is, um, is on page two. That was a new, that was an updated goal from the state last year. Uh, prepare students to be lifelong learners. Um, that replaced the reading on, at grade level by grade three, uh, of the five goals. We still care about kids learning how to read, by the way, but, um, but the state wanted to change that to prepare students to be lifelong learners. We struggled, uh, actually with, with a goal, setting a SMART goal for that one. So it's not, it's, that one is not phrased as a SMART goal at all, uh, but it is actually the work we're doing, and we think it applies to, um, preparing kids to be lifelong learners. We, that one is a really tricky one to, to measure. So, uh, we're sticking with the same goal that we had last year because we're still continuing on with that work with the social studies department and the C-three framework, which I've included on that, on the cheat sheets. Uh, the other goal areas, goal area one, Mrs. Pravky and her team always make their goal, and it just keeps inching up higher and higher each year. Um, so they met their goal at ninety-one percent. Um, and that was all kindergarteners entering, um, entering the school year with word skills, number skills, fine motor, and social emotional skills at or above level on that, on, it's a St. Peter-designed kindergarten entrance checklist. And she has noted on here that this will likely change, we're keeping, probably sticking, we are sticking with this for this year. Um, but next year, actually, the Department of Education is releasing their own kindergarten fall assessment. So, um, there'll be a set of, a data point, um, to compare kindergarteners across the state. Uh, so we'll be likely switching to that. Goal area two, uh, was another, was a goal area that was not met. Um, we, and in conversation about this too, this one is a tricky one. Um, we just took our multilingual learners and their performance on the MCAs, uh, which ends up to be, that's, that's a tough test. Um, and that's a tough test to, um, to compare specifically our English learners to everybody else. Um, so we did not meet that goal. We're changing that based on some feedback from the committee and the principals group. We're changing that, um, we're going to use the FAST A-reading test for our, for that goal number two for next year. All students college and career ready. Um, this is, this one is an exciting one because it, it has to do with our Diploma Plus program, which we're moving forward with at the high school. Um, and you'll notice that we set our goal for two percent, and we met it at increase the number of kids by fifteen percent. Um, it, it was, you'll notice that, um, industry certifications earned, we went from seventeen to a hundred and twenty-five simply because our culinary arts students took the Pro Start exam last year. Um, and that includes everybody who, who earned that as well as, as others. Um, and we're still, we're, we're working on getting our teachers certified to be able to have all of our welding students earn a welding certification. So hopefully that's added this year. Um, and we're really working on, we need to do better on our workplace-ready experience. Those numbers do not include our special education students. Those are general ed kids who can earn a, a credit as well as, um, job experience during the school day. Um, and that, that one is so instructor-dependent on people who have that, that licensure. Uh, South Central Service Co-op pays for instructors to get that, so we're working on getting a couple more certified this school year. But we're pretty proud of that. And if you look at the, um, I don't know why the, this is in here twice. That's on me. Um, the number of college credits earned went from one thousand thirty-nine to one thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven. Um, that's a ton more, and, and that has a lot to do with the, the work that our counselors, um, and along with our partners at MSU and South Central did on, on getting enough of the, um, dual enrollment classes to cover the Minnesota transfer curriculum. So that added a course for sophomores as well as, um, as a math class for juniors. So that one, we're pretty proud of, as well as our graduation rate. That has continued to rise in the last couple of years. Um, again, I say it every single year. It seems funny to set that at anything less than one hundred because that's obviously the goal. Um, but something we're pretty proud of in St. Peter. Uh, of note in the report, I always think it's kind of fun to see how much, oh, I don't know if it made it in here, how much money we've saved families um, based on all those credits. Um, but then, but the amount of, of dollars saved, saving, savings that families have on one thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven credits is pretty impressive. Any questions?
So are we submitting this report yet?
Uh, no. And it is, so this report is to be presented to the board tonight, and it will be linked on our website. And then Dr. Graff and I will submit, will work on a template that is then submitted to the state with the, with our goal areas.
Because I hate to do this, but I noticed when you talked about the college credits earned.
Yeah.
You have that seventeen eighty-seven number, college credits earned twenty twenty, twenty-three through twenty twenty-four.
I don't have a pen on me. Somebody, thank you, because it's linked on our website. So I'm sure people pore over it.
But I just, when I looked at it this afternoon, I saw that number and I thought, holy cow.
What? Yeah. No, thank you.
And then I looked here, and then I said, oh, somehow you got one of the two crossed.
Yep, I did. No, no apology, don't apologize to an English teacher for catching the typo.
And then your approval tonight will signal to an end and I had to get this report submitted to MDE, and I believe we have until December fifteenth, I think, is the deadline.
Actually, I think the deadline is November thirtieth.
Is it?
Yeah.
I could be wrong.
Yes, it used to be like mid-December sometime, but I just checked that in. Plenty of time.
You bet.
We've got all kinds of time.
Yep.
I'll move the approval, and then I do have one question.
I'll second. Motion in a second. Discussion, Mr. Rosso.
Um, very interesting. I always enjoy reading this, seriously, I really do. Page thirty-three, if I may. I'll let you answer that page.
Three, you said?
Thirty-three, thirty-three.
Oh, sorry. I just have the...
Page six of yours.
Page six of yours, yes.
Thank you.
If you want my board packet, you're welcome to browse through that, too. No, it, uh, the paragraph at the top alludes to, to students that enrolled in public institutions. I'm just curious.
Might be your page eight.
Yep, 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 yep.
Six or eight, one or the other.
It's, I think it's seven, it's on...
It's page eight.
Seven and eight. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are...
It refers to public institutions.
Only public institutions report this.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's on the, it's information that, that we can get from the Minnesota Report Card.
Okay.
So, so yeah, this only, they're only counting state institutions.
So students who enroll in a private institution are not reflected?
Correct.
And that would theoretically skew it to a lower number.
Yep.
Interesting.
Good question. Yeah, it is interesting that...
Thank you.
And that charter schools are considered public schools, right?
They are.
By the way, don't, uh, don't send thirty-three pages of this to the state. That will really confuse them.
I thought like, wow, the thirty-three-page CACR report. That would be exciting.
It's really a large print.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Mrs. Engeldinger.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda item five, consider approval of school calendars for twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Dr. Graff.
Okay, so it is, uh, St. Peter's practice, at least since I've been here, uh, to approve two calendar years at a time. Uh, before you, you have draft calendars for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Each year, there are two different drafts. What makes the next two years a little bit unique is that our construction schedule requires in a post-Labor Day start. We have promised our contractors that much time, uh, to get phase two and three done. The problem is, Labor Day is really late for the next two years. It's, it's the second week in September. So we have presented two different versions of each school year. Draft one is if we do school the way we're doing it right now. A full two weeks for winter break and a dismissal, that puts our dismissal the second week of June. Draft two for both years, we take a little bit from winter break, and that allows us to end school the first week in June. So there's been a lot of conversation. Uh, I believe this group has seen this at least twice. Uh, we went over it at a study session. The policy committee meeting, our committee has seen it. The education committee has seen it, uh, a couple times. And at the most recent education committee, there was a recommendation made by the committee to move forward with version two. And some of the rationale is just the idea of keeping kids engaged all the way up till the second week in June. It is our opinion, our observation. Kids are ready to come to school in, in the beginning of the school year. Uh, but as soon as it gets nice outside, associations start rolling, kids are having practice late in the night, we switch the clocks. It's a little bit harder to keep them engaged, especially into June. So we felt, or the, the committee felt, um, that it is educationally beneficial to go with version two. Anything the committee would like to add? Or questions from the board?
I think, I think it's interesting, um, to, to, to do this comparison. I, the important fact for me is, number one, that the, that, um, Education Association liked this draft, and number two, this is just for now. It's not gonna be, we're not, it's not like we're doing this in the future. It's not gonna be, we're not, it's not like we're doing this in the future, this is to deal with the men in the middle work. So that was an important consideration.
Three years from now, Labor Day will go back to first week in September.
Is it possible that because Labor Day is so late, that there's more time than the construction companies anticipated? And they could finish before Labor Day, a week early like, and we could move that up?
It is possible. I've communicated with our representatives from ICS. And what they're communicating back is because we have, when, when we drafted up the, the timeline, it was communicated to them that they'd have until Labor Day. So to redo those schedules, will, they would have to essentially go back and renegotiate with all of the crews. And in short, yes, John, anything's possible, but it's gonna cost. So it was not recommended by ICS to, to mess with those construction calendars.
I'm on the education committee. And I just wanna clarify that this went to the education, SPA. And SPA has said they have spoken to their teachers and that this is the agreement that they have recommended is option two.
The representatives at the SPA meeting said that they preferred this. Whether or not they have communicated beyond that team, I don't, I do not, I can't say for certain.
I just want that part known.
It was presented to SPA at an earlier meeting and was discussed, hey, go out and get some feedback.
Because I'm on board and I'm a team player, I'm on draft one team. But I thought doing one one way and one the other way was a good way to make everyone happy. But, but I'm a team player, so I'm gonna go on draft two. But I just thought if we did the twenty-third the one year, then we'd be on that way. But, but like I said, I'm a team player, so I will go with the team. But if this is what the teachers want, then I will go with that. But I just wanna make it known that I'm voting this way in the spirit of thinking that this is what the teachers want. And I just want everyone to know that.
Sure.
That that is why I'm voting that way, is cause that is what I think the teachers have said they wanted.
And to clarify, Ms. Prackey and I meet with representatives from SPA every month. And this has been shown to them and the members at that table said that they much preferred version two.
They're all application scheduled already.
And the board obviously has the authority to, to change this. At any time.
Happy teachers. It's what the teachers want.
Change, I suggest, everyone just destroys it anyway, so it doesn't matter.
It was stormy out there.
Huh? I said, I don't think you need two days in October. It's not a holiday.
It's probably in front of me in fine print, but the actual instructional days are identical total to what they had in this past year and the current year.
Hundred and eighty-five contract days, hundred and seventy-three instructional days at the high school, four less, one hundred and sixty-eight.
So no change.
No change, no, the same as these years.
Thank you.
And we won't necessarily need a move day at the end of the year this year, right?
Right now, what's being discussed is we will not need a move day. The, the move will be significant, but it impacts about five teachers at the middle school. Many of the spaces are, are large spaces, such as the choir and band room, the media center. But about five teachers, the last time I walked through, will be impacted. So, is that accurate, Ms. Butel?
Sure. And we don't have, I know a lot of, there's.
Always this perception that I've, or things have been said like that St. Peter always has so many more minutes than we need to. But that's not really the case, from what I've understood. Because every level or every grade has a certain number of minutes. But, I mean, then we might be more over on some levels, but we don't have a ton of wiggle room there.
Yeah, and I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I can certainly get that to you.
Yeah.
When we made the decision to shorten the middle school day to provide for collaboration time, cause you remember that conversation?
Yeah.
We, it got tighter.
Yeah.
And there's, there's always that fear, we get five flex days. So inclement weather days, you get five of those. If you go beyond that, flex days don't count anymore.
Yeah.
So there's always that fear and we never wanna get to a point where we're adding days back on. So that's, that's just a consideration.
And we get to go into June and we get to really test it out.
Test it out. But, but you are correct, there's not as much wiggle room as there used to be.
Okay.
Would not recommend it.
For the school calendars, I move to approve draft two of the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven calendar. And also draft two of the twenty-twenty-seven to twenty-twenty-eight calendars.
Yeah, we talked about both together. Yep.
All second.
Motion in a second, further discussion?
The next steps to this, should these be approved, is meeting with the principal team and getting all of the details put on their conference nights, things of that nature, before we get it onto the website.
So the motion is to pass, or to approve draft two of the twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight calendars. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six, consider policies with legislative requirements for approval with one reading, Dr. Graff.
All right, the policy committee reviewed a number of policies this past month. And all but one of those policies is coming before you tonight for approval with a single reading due to very, very minor or no changes. One thing that I wanna point out, there are a few policies on here where there are no changes. We still do want to, the policy committee still wants to, to formally approve those. That way we have written record that they've been approved. We wanna make sure that when we're doing our three-year cycle, we've got documentation of all of the policies getting checked off the list. So if the board is okay with it, I'll go through each and just briefly describe what those changes are. Okay? So policy five-seventeen, it's our policy that essentially prohibits recruiting of students. There are no changes recommended. Policy five-eighteen is our DNR, DNI orders policy. It creates guidelines around situations where a school district might get a do-not-resuscitate order. There are no changes recommended. Policy five-nineteen is about interviews of students by outside agencies. This provides guidance around authorized individuals having access to students during the school day. There are very minor legislative changes recommended, and those changes are being recommended to match MSBA's model policy. Section three A, for example, it's, it's a change in the language of that section to match policy, or I'm sorry, to match statute two-sixty-E dot two-two subdivision two. So that statute has been altered, so they're changing the language to match that statute exactly. Policy five-twenty-six, hazing prohibition, policy that prohibits hazing, no changes are recommended. Policy five-twenty-eight, student parental family and marital status nondiscrimination. There are some very minor changes recommended. And those are really about changing the policy references to match what the policies are now called. Policy five-twenty-two was formerly called student sex nondiscrimination. It is now called Title IX Sex Nondiscrimination Grievance Procedure and Process. That policy is referenced twice in that, in, in policy five-twenty-eight. So the only change is recommended are to be, to change that to match. Policy five-twenty-nine, staff notification of violent behaviors by students. This provides guidance or guidelines around how we would notify staff should there be a student with violent behaviors. There are minor legislative changes recommended, and it's all in the legal reference section. And then policy five-thirty-one, pledge of allegiance, provides guidance on when and how we offer or say the pledge of allegiance in schools. No changes recommended. Anything to add, policy committee?
I would just say we had a robust discussion of each of these. It looks as though we're just kind of running through them. But the, the ones that we're just looking at again and not making any changes, we do have an obligation to review them every two, two to three years. So we're making sure that that's covered.
Any questions?
Just, we've been looking at the one with the staff notification of violent behavior by students. When you have the, and just cruising over it quickly, is the definition of an employee, did that transfer over to the, like a bus driver? Is that considered a staff member?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't know why that was significant to me. There is nothing that happened that makes me think that, I'm not trying to open up a can of wormers or anything, I just.
Well, that's a good question, because technically bus drivers are not our employees, so.
I mean, it wa, it was written in red as like a conversation that to be had, so no, there's nothing that's happened, I'm not alluding to anything, I'm just.
And then within the system, anybody with an educational need to know would be included in that policy.
So I'm a little interested in the logistics, cause it's covered in the policy. And I'm assuming the policy is being followed, but it says it's a written notification. Is that written notification going to subs also? Cause it talks about subs are being notified.
And we've discussed this and that is a practice that we, we need to discuss. Yep. So the, in, in practice, we track behaviors with behavioral referrals. And we have record of that, that is accessible by those who need to know. Substitutes do not have that access.
No, but do they, are they notified that, hey, you're taking over this class today? And there's a kid in here who.
Not to the extent that we should be, to be open and honest.
So are we gonna fix that?
Yes. And then there's the, there's, there's the discussion that would happen at the student support level of what is that level that we now need to notify? Great question.
Cause, yeah, I mean, I'm assuming that notification could prevent possible bad occurrences.
And this is the value of going through every single policy, even if there's no changes recommended, every three years. It's because it forces us to look at each one and think about how, how we're meeting those needs or following that policy, being compliant. And there's always things to, to do better at.
I like moved at this and was like, wow, there's like a policy for this. But then I'm like, as a parent going, wow, there probably should be a policy about this. And wow, this is all really very interesting. And then I'm like, when does the parental notice, is that in one of those things we get at the beginning of the year? Sorry. All those things you get, you know? Just so many things that teachers, I mean, so many things.
It's a lot to keep track of. And once again, that, that is the value of doing this at this level every three years, is it really helps us examine our practices.
Could you clarify five-eighteen?
Clarify what the policy is.
Yeah, just a quick summary.
So in a situation where a family would request their child has a do-not-resuscitate order. If something catastrophic were to happen, their request is do not provide medical assistance. We will. We, we will not accept a do-not-resuscitate order. We are obligated to provide care.
Yeah, that's what I wanted clarification on. And that is communicated to staff. Thank you.
Interesting.
Good discussion.
Do you have a motion yet?
I don't do that.
Approve policies five-seventeen, five-eighteen, five-nineteen, five-twenty, five-twenty-six, five-twenty-eight, five-twenty-nine, and five-thirty-one for approval after one reading.
Motion in a second, further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to information items. Number one, review of policy manual revisions of first reading. Dr. Graff?
We have one policy that is being brought forward for a first reading. That policy is five-twenty-seven, student use and parking of motor vehicles, patrols, inspection, and searches. There is a section in that policy that describes essentially when high school students can access their cars. SPPS's policy is slightly different in the fact that it calls out off-site classes, PSEO classes, and with parental permission. The policy committee is recommending that we also add language to describe situations around junior and senior privilege. In addition, there is a minor legal reference that we are recommending that we add or change to match MSBA's model policy. So first reading, so you can get your eyes on it, ask questions if you have them.
I have one.
Yes.
The, and maybe I'm misinterpreting what I'm reading. But in the area, it talks about student use of motor vehicles on school grounds outside of school hours. And it says the high school's the only place that they can use motor vehicles, if I read it right. And I'm thinking we have juniors and seniors who probably are driving, who may be driving from the high school to the middle school for swimming practice. Or now we learned yesterday that the girls' wrestling team is gonna practice there. And theoretically, that would be a violation of the way that policy's written, if I'm reading it right.
Sure, because it's within the purview of the school day.
Well, it says outside the school day. So I, you know, if you have a swim meet on Saturday, for instance, that's not considered a school day. But I'm sure they're gonna drive up there. So take a look at that section.
So how extracurriculars might play into this?
Yeah.
Sounds like a good topic for our next policy committee meeting.
Yep.
I do think that the policy does say is specific, specific to the school day. And so the practices and so on would maybe be out there, but we will definitely come through that one directly.
Great, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up, community and family education report and update. Ms. Skinner, hello?
Hi, it is so nice to be able to meet with you and share about some of the things that happened in community and family education over the last school year. I know I've shared this in previous reports, but community ed looks different in every single community. That's because we are charged with meeting the needs of our particular community. So things that happen here in St. Peter are very different than what might be happening in Mankato's community ed. I also think of us as a bridge, a bridge between our community and our schools. Especially for people who do not have children in our school district. We are a way to show people our facilities and help them be invested in seeing the education that's occurring within those spaces. We just build more support for our school district. If you look at the two pictures on the very front of the report, the very top one is from our community choir. And last year we had thirty-eight. And last year we had 38 participants, which this year has grown to 55. And fun fact, we had fall performances, one of them happening last night and the other one Sunday night. They were well attended and it's just really fun to see this group growing. The next picture is from Saints Overtime. During the winter months on Fridays, we bring the kids up to the middle school pool to get off some of that extra energy that they have when it's too cold to be outside. So those are some of the big things that we've had going on. If you look at the next page, as I said earlier, we really help strengthen the community and the schools in a lot of different ways. One of those ways is providing safe, accessible learning environments and opportunities for all ages. We are so fortunate to have great facilities within our community. We can use all of our school buildings and we use the community center as well for our programming. We also connect families to school and community resources. Families can benefit from support through our early childhood family education classes and school readiness preschool programs. We also collaborate with the public library, the senior center, public health, the food shelf, and the rec department to provide a lot of different resources for families. And if you look to the photo right next to that paragraph, this is from one of our community threads meeting and you'll notice Etive Pravki is presenting. This is a monthly gathering that we have for people who are new to the community and those who, for English is not their primary language. And what we do is we share with them all of the different services and agencies and organizations in our community that are there to help them. And in this particular photo, Etive is talking about our preschool programs. And helping prepare children for kindergarten is another way that we help strengthen our community. Etive and the early, early childhood staff do an excellent job of making sure that kids are ready to transition into kindergarten. And this is part of community and family education's contribution to the district's comprehensive achievement and civic readiness goals, which you would know as CACR. Supporting working families is another way that we help. And the Saints Overtime program, under the direction of Kerry Erickson, provides people with safe, high-quality after-school childcare. And that's held at both of our elementary schools during the school year. And then during the summertime, the program is housed at North. And during the last school year, we served 165 children. The majority of our staff are college students from Gustavus and they, the majority of them are majoring in education. And we're really fortunate to be able to have this partnership with Gustavus and have this crew of young, excited, and fun, energized people to work with our kids. And if you look at the photo to the left, you'll see that cute little guy holding a goat. We took the kids on a field trip to the goofy goat farm. And then if you look at the picture next to that, we, we went swimming at Philando. So in the summertime, we like to go on a variety of field trips, take kids to places that maybe they won't be able to go to with their families. It's a really fun opportunity for them. Expanding learning beyond the classroom is another way that we draw connections within our community. We know that our after-school enrichment programs and summer programs really play a vital role in social, emotional, and academic development for students. We provide students with an opportunity to explore interests, build skills, and participating in things like art and music and STEM classes really helps to build critical thinking and problem-solving skills in students, which then trickles down into enhancing the learning that they are receiving during the regular school day. If you look to the right of that, that is a photo of Mrs. Ny Hammer teaching one of the art classes. She's been teaching with us for over a year and every one of her classes always fill, which is a great sign that kids enjoy the things that she's providing. Building a qualified workforce is another way that we help out. Our Adult Basic Education Program provides adults with the skills that they need to either seek better employment opportunities or to transition on into higher education. People can work towards getting their high school diploma or their GED. They can improve literacy and math proficiency and also learning English. And during the last year, we served people from Mexico, Somalia, Guatemala, Honduras, Ukraine, Ethiopia, El Salvador, Djibouti, Kenya, and Nicaragua. And pictured here is our June commencement ceremony. If you'll notice, Nate Warden is the person at the podium. He is the coordinator of our Adult Basic Ed program. And we had one person earn their high school diploma and then the others earned their GED in this program. We also help with improving the quality of life. We know that lifelong learning provides valuable benefits like reducing stress, improving mental well-being, and also providing people with opportunities to learn new skills, whether it's through art or music or a fitness class. We know that we are creating experiences that inspire curiosity, connection, and personal fulfillment for people. And if you see the picture next to that, that's one of our cooking classes. Creating a sense of community and belonging is so important. We know that everybody wants to feel like they belong. And so offering classes and events which bring people of all ages together really helps build a strong, connected community. From events like Women Celebrating Women to cross-cultural learning opportunities, films at the Historical Society or sharing meals, our programs really create spaces for people to have meaningful conversation and dialogue. And we know that children and youth also benefit from those things as well in helping them to develop social and leadership skills, building confidence, and then forming those lasting friendships. In addition to all of those things, we also take care of scheduling our school facilities for non-school groups. And I thought you might be interested to learn a little bit of the numbers from last year. We worked with 51 groups who reserved our spaces for a total of 14,783 hours. So our school facilities were busy all the time, which is wonderful. In the school year, we partnered with 33 different organizations and groups to offer programming to serve 7,509 children and 7,575 adults for a total of 15,884 people. As you can see, we had a really busy year. And all of those services take a lot of behind-the-scenes work. And Alina Webster, our program assistant, and Beth Toms, our secretary, do a wonderful job of making sure that everything runs smoothly. And I am really proud to work alongside our community ed team. They do a great job. And it's a pleasure to serve the school district in this capacity. And that is the end of my report, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
And I have to tell you that I did make a request that if it's at all possible, I would like to see how that, those numbers at the end compared to some of our comparable districts in terms of what our community ed does, because I think it's pretty, pretty expansive.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I just want to say thank you, Tammy. Kind of work from you and your team and, you know, a strong district equals a strong community and community ed is that link. You know, we really are not just the kids, but the whole community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thanks.
Next up, Activities Director update. Mr. Rorcasie, welcome back. Glad you stuck around.
What else we got to do, right? Thanks for having me. I do have, it's just like an informational, I can hand them to Kimberly and pass her out if you want. But it is just some numbers that we threw together based off of the fall. Participation numbers and also ticket sales and passes and things along those lines. And so once you get those, we can kind of go over some of the numbers and then also just talk about the fall in general and gearing up for winter. So as you can see, our participation numbers, and this is just for, for sports, as we hadn't finalized our registration for activities, like mock trial and the musical and things along those lines that do more and we're registering for more now. But we had 461 participants from seven through 12, which in my time is the highest number by far, which is pretty, pretty big number. And right now, that number's probably closer to 550 when we're now getting into like those student activity registrations that I talked about. And like basketball and the musical and all those different things. And that's 550, pretty much different registrations, so 550 different students. There's a few that are, that do the, that we had that did girls cross-country and girls tennis or girls cross-country and soccer and things like that. But for the most part, those are all like those solo registration numbers, which is, was really fun to see. But from that, you can see that we had 63 scholarships. And again, that Premier Partners donation helps to alleviate some of that. That Form A that we just talked about helps alleviate some of that, as well as some grants and donations we've had in the past. We use as for those, for those scholarships as well. Ticket sales can show that what we brought in over the fall, which is a big number and we had a lot of big events, had great weather, which helps when we're not dealing with rain and early snow and things along those lines. Money that we brought in just for activity fees of $55,000. And then our concession stand as well. So, and then we talked about Premier Partners, or you heard about Premier Partners earlier in the meeting. So just wanted to kind of touch base on some of those numbers. We are running out of space for Premier Partners signage, which is a good problem to have. So we're got a new board to put underneath the scoreboards to put more signage up and hopefully have more businesses that are interested in that as well. So, yeah, I don't know, I can pause there if anybody has any questions and then continue.
Question for you, Shay.
Yeah.
So when you look at the adult tickets.
Yep.
Is, how do you calculate if, if somebody bought a pass? Like is that, are these unique to it's not a pass, it's, it's a one-time ticket?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Because then when they, when they show up, they would just show us their pass. Our person with how it's set up just clicks okay, they walk in, so they would not be purchasing a ticket.
Sure. So that's a unique ticket sale.
Yes. For that soccer, volleyball, football, whatever game.
Does that include sections? Do you know that?
It would not, because those numbers we have to give back to the high school league.
This is just our money.
Correct.
So with the concessions, when you say payouts, that's the payout going to the booster club?
Yeah, or any, so we, but whoever's doing the, covering that, yes.
Okay.
So we...
So that $10,000 is the school profit?
Correct.
Participation numbers, Shay, and for instance, in boys cross-country, were there some, there was only one middle school student out? Or were there some middle school kids that were on the varsity and they're not...
There was just one out for this year. We had a couple that were interested, but only one, one stuck it out and threw out the rest of the year. But, but yeah, that's a sport that really goes in, kind of in waves. So hopefully we...
So if there are seventh and eighth graders that are participating on the varsity sports, they're still listed in the middle school.
Correct. Yes. Yep. So yeah, you could look at it more nine, 12, 7, 8.
Increases are great.
Yeah.
Right? More, more students getting involved, wonderful and all, across the board extracurriculars. Do we collect data on the experience? Like how, what students thought of their experience with swim dive, with cheer, with the musical?
We do have a, always, I'll be doing one, a, like a student survey. We do an interest survey on things that they would like to see us offer that we don't. Every two or three years, kind of go off of that data. So we're coming up on, on one of those. And then we kind of like quarterly do a, I guess, yeah, student survey of, of the, like their coaches or just the overall program that they were in.
Okay. Yeah. Because I think that's compelling info too, like what, what did I learn? Being on the swim team.
Right.
And how do I talk about it?
Yeah. So, yeah.
Suggesting you do this, but what would be interesting is to see what the attrition rate is. How many ninth graders continue with the same activity or similar activity, 10th grade, 11th grade, and so on?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we could, we should be able to pull those numbers. We just switched over to a registration system this year, but I think hopefully like we're using the same one next year. It would be pretty easy, I think, to pull those rosters from like last year's registration to, you know...
And they may choose to go from sport X to sport Y, but still participate.
Sure. Yeah, right. Yep. Yep. Yeah. Just based off of like, you know, first glance looking at rosters and names that we see coming across, I would assume that's a pretty high number, especially if we continue to see like higher numbers in participations overall. But, but yeah, I mean, it would be actually interesting just to kind of see, you know, if they're moving from sport to sport or if it's just, you know, similar students across the same thing. So, yeah. And then just to kind of highlight some excitement over the, the fall, hopefully able to catch some, some events, but or see some excitement through Kurt's posts on Facebook and things like that. So obviously, you know, we had a fun football season. They went seven and one. Swimming and volleyball had, had great years. Both our boys and girls soccer made it to the section finals, which for the girls, first time being in double A. They made it. Unfortunately, we lost to a school from Mankato East. But I did see Dr. Graff had his blue on that day, so, but... And that was one where we had a little bit of rain and cold that night. That was, but luckily I was able to go in the booth. He had to at least sit out in the stands, so. But that was awesome. Boys cross-country, we placed third in the section and we had two students qualify for the state high school league meet, which was the first time in talking with Coach Dewey that he can remember, which is quite a few years, so at least 30-plus years, if, if maybe ever. So that was exciting for, for our boys program. Girls cross-country repeated as section two double A champions. And then obviously had an all-state and, excuse me, Lucia Penner, but then the big notification of Kira Friedrich being a state champion. And by like 20 seconds, and it was actually really, it was quite impressive to, to watch and congratulations to her and Coach Portegui's team, obviously, for that. Girls tennis, also section two double A champs. Thankfully, we finally had three classes in girls tennis, don't have to play Minnetonka anymore. And so we were able to qualify for state and then also had five individuals qualify for state out of the six that can go for girls tennis. So exciting there. And then obviously we have a big weekend coming up with The Little Mermaid, so hopefully you have your tickets for that. It's going to be an amazing show and, and set and so it should be fun to kind of, that'll kind of kick off the winter season, really. Because after that, we start with hockey and basketball and wrestling matches and everything else, so, yeah.
And it might be a lot of work, but I really like numbers and this is kind of fun to see. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Our hope is to bring Mr. Rorcasie back after every season.
Then we can start tracking it and making graphs and line charts.
All sorts of fun.
I'm so excited.
And if I may, I do want to congratulate Mr. Rorcasie.
Yes.
He named the section two A AD of the year.
Yeah, thank you.
Well deserved, sir. Well deserved.
So, yeah, and then I did want to talk, or just kind of make notes, as Dr. Graff and I have been talking about and Mr. Cowell brought up, girls wrestling, which is continuing to grow and grow and it's an emergency, emerging sport right now in the high school league. So it's just one thing we want to kind of keep on the back of our mind about what that might look like in St. Peter as it becomes a sport and what that process is if we bring on a new activity. And if we are going to be able to support that and not, but it's just going to be a continuing conversation because right now we're sitting at, I think, 10 that are fully registered and hopefully getting up to like 14 or 15 girls throughout this week kind of getting their physicals and getting completely registered and things like that, which is a... Um girls throughout this week kinda getting their physicals and getting completely registered and things like that, which is a. Um you know, double up from last year and if that continues, it's gonna be a bigger and bigger thing, which is a great thing, but just. Continuing conversation along those lines and other emerging sports that may or activities that might be coming along, so.
Like a girls as their own team?
Um in our area, right, well, right now wrestling is still just considered wrestling.
Okay.
And there's a girls um individual tournament for the section and state. Um but when they go to wrestle, um like at the team tournament, they're just part of the, the wrestling team.
Okay.
Um then either next year or the year after, they're hoping to have enough schools that would be able to do it where they're having its own girls. Girls wrestling, which then it would be split up like basically like you think about boys and girls basketball. So they have their own schedule, their own, you know.
Nice.
Everything on state section tournaments and things along.
I did not know we had that many girls. I mean, I knew we had girls that were wrestling, but I didn't know it was that hot. That's awesome.
It is, it is, and I think there's actually, um we're talking with a lot of people involved in the youth association, those numbers are. Even bigger down in the, you know, elementary ages and stuff like that, which is, you know, so finding space.
The preliminary numbers for number of kids out for wrestling total?
Um.
Roughly?
Without like doing a deep dive, yeah, fifty-five to sixty probably total in wrestling.
That's awesome.
It is, but we're trying to find some space for them.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know, so just needed to, you know, uh put on an addition and, you know, an extra gym, we'll be fine. Be great, so.
Lower grades interests are in participating and what activities in the future?
It is, yeah, well, but we just do it through our, through the high school.
Okay.
So um nine through twelve.
Did you see?
We'll add in, we'll have um come, so a couple of the big ones now are um will go, girls wrestling will be on there, but then um girls flag football. Becoming a bigger trend. Um right now, it's a club, right, basically the Minnesota Vikings are really trying to push it. Um so that they can participate on Sundays and have a little more flexibility on when they can play and practice. Um so that will be on there as well as boys volleyball. Um but talking with area schools that hasn't picked up a whole lot of momentum, um but you never know, so.
Lacrosse, is that popular?
That will be on there. Um we have, in the couple we've done, we have not seen much interest in St. Peter, um but.
If only.
I know.
Probably attract a family.
There too.
I don't know, but.
Roll wheel skiing.
Probably all those are spring sports and we have plenty going on in the spring, but.
Exactly.
Then we really would need another gym if we have all those added on. Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it. Congrats again, too. Item number four, update on the plan to utilize Madison National as the district's paid leave administrator.
Megan, hi.
So as you all know, Minnesota paid leave is starting January first, uh twenty twenty-six. So the district has been working hard to hammer out all of the details that we're going to have to um to utilize in that implementation. One of those pieces was deciding who we were going to have our plan through. We could use the Minnesota state plan through deed or we could go with a private plan. We worked with our broker, NIS, Aaron Casper and Company. Um they help us with our health and dental and all of our other insurance plans. Um so they obtained a quote for us through Madison National Life. Madison National currently does our life and LTD insurance. Um and so in discussion with our group, in discussion with the business committee, our recommendation was to go with Madison National Life. Uh we did that for two primary reasons. First, the rate, the premium that they're going to charge us, the state plan is point eight eight percent. Shared between employer and employee. The Madison National Life plan is only point eight three. So a small savings, not, not huge, but small savings for both us and the employee. And then um a bigger factor was the customer service piece. We're not really sure how this is gonna roll out with the entire state going into this plan. Madison National has administered this um similar plans in other states, so this is not their first rodeo. So we just felt that our employees who are going to utilize Minnesota paid leave would have a better experience if we went with Madison National. So we ran it through the business committee. We got their blessing. We did have to apply with the state of Minnesota if we were going to use an equivalent plan, so we have already applied and gotten approval. To use Madison National. Um today, an email went out to staff just to notify them that a formal. Um notice will be sent to them on Friday. They and actually all of you will receive that notice through our smart system and they'll have to acknowledge that they received that. So at this point, we just wanted to let you know that is, that is the administrator that we have chosen to use. A year from now, if we decide that um either our premiums go up or we aren't receiving great customer experience, we do have the opportunity to go for a different private company. Or to go with deed, we're only locked in for one-year commitment, so. Any questions on that?
Mm-hmm.
I think so too.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you, Megan. That is all the informational items, reports. Principals.
Somebody has to show Darren how to do this, right? Um well, you guys stole my, um my lead, but congratulations to Shay Rorcas for being the region AD of the year. And um what you didn't mention was that he will now be, um I think he has had to gather a couple of recommendations. Um and he's in the running for the state AD of the year. And this is only his fifth year as it, it might feel like it's been twenty-five years, but um he, this is only his fifth year as our AD, so that's really impressive. Um so congratulations to Shay and that's well deserved. Um I also wanted to mention, I know that we have struggled in the last few years to have a student council report. Um but I, I would like to propose that um that I invite our senior class officers rather than our student council officers. Um our senior class officers this year are super involved in trying to make the year. Extra fun and meaningful for their classmates. Uh so Quinn DeBlique is the senior class president. Um and he would be happy to, to come and be the student rep on the, on the board, if that's something that you're interested in. Um the first thing that they did, they're, they're um. I, it's, this is sort of like asking forgiveness, um but they wanna do something fun at the end of each quarter for just the senior class. And so they played hide and seek in the building on the last day of the quarter from six to seven. It was supervised. They were great. They had a, they, they had like eighty-some kids there who participated in hide and seek at the high school. Really fun, so they're just trying to come up with, with some new fun events and so I think that he'd be a great guy to give you updates on what's going on at the high school. Each month, but hang on, right? Careful, careful what you wish for, I guess. Um I also wanted to just, uh our, our personal finance class is not new to us, but it's new to the math department this year. Uh it is, it is a state requirement that everybody, I believe in the class of twenty twenty-eight. Has to have personal finance at some point. Uh our, our thought is that it makes the most sense to have that. Class that your junior or senior year. I wish that my graduate had had a personal finance class her junior or senior year. Um but Heidi Niemeyer is, is teaching that class this year and she's doing a fantastic job. And she's, you know, reviewing some new curriculum. These are the kids who signed up for the class as a, as an elective. So they're all juniors and seniors this year, uh but, but that math department, I give them credit for taking that on and a brand-new class and they're doing it, she's doing a great job. And then the musical. Hopefully we'll see you all there this weekend.
All right. Uh a few updates on the St. Peter Middle School is we've had uh two great months of student of the month, September, October, and. What a, a great spotlight for our students to showcase um some individuals and um just individuals are like, yeah, this is my year. I got it, you know? I'm finally behaving, you know, an eighth grader and I was like, I didn't know, so. Um so that's always fun. That's always great news to share with our families and um the teachers decide that, so it's individuals that are showing those pride expectations. Really um kinda going above and out of their way, so remarkable. First student council dance, December fifth, so I have, I'm not sure what to, what, what, what's gonna entail, but I'm excited for it. Um I hear it's a great time. Dr. Graff has, has told me, so if you're looking for a fun night on Friday, you know, come on and, and see us. I'll be on on the dance floor. I like to dance, so. I, it sounds like he wants to, yeah, so we have our celebration day coming up and so with our celebration day is our, our teachers. Decide different activities for our students, different experiences and students get to sign up. And so it's just a different opportunity for them to be with a different teacher or to um be with their friends or just kind of a, an opportunity to do uh new experiences. So looking forward to that, getting to know a little bit more about that process and how we can make it even better. We have Biz Town coming up, our sixth grade through junior achievement. Looking forward to this. This is, we've had a lot of our community members coming into the school. We had our interviews and we're up for mayor speeches, so it's been really awesome. See our students in the hallways giving their speeches. Those will be presented to their peers, um teachers and they will decide who's going to be the mayor of Biz Town, so looking forward to that. Uh we also, our yearbook contestant for the yearbook cover, Miles Hoffman, really awesome, so if you're looking for some. Great artwork by our students, come into our front office. We have those displayed, so um really talented individuals that we have in our five through eight. Um grades. And last but not least, we have Turkey Bingo next week. I don't know what that entails, but I'm looking forward to it, so. I think if there's a blow-up turkey, you might have to wear it. Just might have to, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna start there. Is that okay? Principal Sakura. All right, well greetings from North Elementary School, everybody. I have just four items to talk about. First one, uh we just finished up. Uh conferences. Are they making comments? Uh just finished up conferences, uh where again, love the cooperation with our families. Ninety, ninety-five percent, a lot of teachers saying a hundred percent participation, which is wonderful. We made a shift. We did a pilot last year about coming up with like a standardized template for student-led conferences. Um agreed upon that template and this is the first time we applied it in, throughout the, the building and got some good feedback. I stopped about ten. Students and families in the hallway randomly and just asked them how it went and they produced their template they guided through, so it's like, what's going well, you know, goals. Um progress, visual learning progressions, charting things, um but hand it to the teachers. I mean, that takes. That's a, it's, it's three back-to-back pages of a document that they complete over multiple weeks getting ready for the conference. And so that it's, it's the students learning, they're in charge of it, so they need to be sharing it with their families and engagement level, um. Well, teachers, um other than like preparing for it, you kinda have to prep ahead, um some good, great feedback and then I'm gonna send out just a five-question survey to families, see what they thought about it. So hopefully get some results and um adjust from there. Uh also, uh let's see, a couple opportunities. Lots going on at North. Continental Math League started, um so that's involuntary. Anybody can participate in it. Uh coach, math coach Robinson coaches second, third and fourth graders. They stay after school and then it's a, it's a challenge. It's a competition. They co, he coaches them through strategies. They're tough math problems. Um they don't have to participate in the competitions, but then we kinda keep track of like, out of the five questions, how many questions were right? And then it's, it's ongoing throughout the year, so you can see kinda who rises to the top. So um good luck to that crew and then also just wanna make sure everybody's aware that in third and fourth grade this year, we're um providing an academic enrichment uh program with um a volunteer parent who's coming in and using the mind. Um it's, used to be called the DI curriculum. Fire, uh it's fire, skill fire. And so there's a curriculum that goes along with that with problem solving and really um teamwork um with a common goal um that they'll be. Um pulling on Fridays, like rotating back and forth, three, third and fourth grade back and forth, so that'll, that'll be new, so that'll be um. Parents have to sign up, first of all, they have to qualify based on some um assessment screening details and then parents have to be okay with it, you know? So we're, uh we're gonna be starting that in December. Also, uh eighth annual rebranded, formerly known as No, North's Clothes Closet. It is Quinn's Clothes Closet, five to eight o'clock this Friday, two days. Front hallway at North is packed with clothing. Um and I'm not sure how the other offices look, but there's a lot of work to be done now, so at one o'clock on Friday, crew volunteers come in. Quinn has been working at transitioning. They have three students in ninth grade, I believe, ninth or tenth, they're ninth, um that are working on taking over for her. So they've been, we've been in communication and they're doing a great job and pretty fun work with, with the new branding. We've tried to be really purposeful of like formerly known as. Quinn, you know, North's Clothes Closet. Not as big as Prince when he changed his name to Assemble, but still pretty good. That's right, that's right. So again, Friday, five to eight, completely free, everything in the North Gym. Um and then we also will be doing North-style Turkey Bingo, so we'll see, we'll might have to send out another survey to see which one has more gobbling going on on Wednesday. Between middle school and North.
Oh boy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh gosh, so at South Elementary, we are doing something that North has been doing for a while with flexible grouping and reading. And so our, our cohorts, we have a cohort of just kindergarten, we have a mixed cohort, some kindergarten, some first grade, and then we have a first-grade cohort. But among the cohorts, the teachers are dividing the kids up um for thirty minutes to do some really targeted skill practice. So Odin talked about diagrams. That is one of the targeted skills um that a group is working on. So our students are getting all grade level, um. Uh they're getting, gosh, what's the word? Um, yeah, they're getting exposure to that grade-level stuff. Um everybody is for thirty minutes and then thirty minutes of targeted what they might need, so it might be. Enrichment, it might be going back a skill, so just that very targeted practice. Thank you, Mr. Doherty. Um so that's just something that's been new and it's been going really well. Kids are loving it. Um they love to get to go to. Uh see a new teacher, to see new groups of friends and teachers are really enjoying getting to know kids from other classrooms as well, so it's been very positive. Um this week, we had the Native American Heritage Cultural Trunk um in our building at South. John Warren, our equity coordinator, has been coming over and speaking with our kindergarten and first-grade classes. It's been really good. Teachers have had really positive feedback. They said they're learning quite a bit as well. They like to get CEUs, um but the kids are asking tons of questions. Um they're raising hands or, I mean, they're just very, very engaged and it's such a hands-on great activity, so thank you to John. Our teachers have incorporated um two Native American books this week. Kindergarten is reading fry bread, first grade is reading pow-wow day, and our kitchen is involved as well. They are serving fry bread on Friday, so it's really been a really, a great week um with that in our building, kind of a theme. Um we are not doing Turkey Bingo, but we are doing our annual Balloons Over Broadway Parade the day before Thanksgiving. Um it's tied to the book called Balloons Over Broadway about the puppeteer that invented the Macy's Day Parade balloons. So that is a collaborative effort between our art teacher, Kelly Nyhammer, and our steam teacher, Rachel Schwegart. Um the kids work on these paper balloons and they do a parade and it's very, very fun, so probably more fun than Turkey Bingo.
It could be, measurable.
Could be. Um Odin said that our gratitude, our theme this month is gratitude and I would like to express some gratitude. November eleventh to the fifteenth was our school psychology appreciation week. We've been talking a lot about MTSS at the administrative team level and it's also one of our strategic priorities and our school psychs are a huge part of that, so. Thanks to them. Friday is National Substitute Appreciation Day. We have great substitutes in our district and they are hard to find, so appreciation for them. And we have a active parent council. Um they provided meals for our conference nights for teachers, so thank you to all of the families that generously donated. And they are planning a movie night now for December fifth, so if you're not going to the dance, come to the South movie, movie night. Um it should be fun, so. Uh gosh, it's a short, frozen movie, Olaf's Winter Adventure and then a How to Train Your Dragon homecoming, so two short films. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Graff?
Just some quick ones. Uh a message went out to all families in the district uh today. Reminding folks of our flexible learning day policies, practices, um so that the board knows nothing will change. Those will stay as they've been uh in the last year. Uh next, just a reminder, MSBA conference, leadership conference is coming up. We'd love to see you all there. If you have not yet connected with Kimberly to let her know of your plans, please do so. So that we can get registered and uh lodging. Uh musical, super excited about that. That's an annual little date night for me and my daughter. We're gonna squeeze it in between hockey games. We'll be there Friday. And lastly, I typically don't have a big social calendar, uh you know, conflicts, but. I typically don't have a big social calendar, uh, you know, conflicts, but December fifth, I got a dance and a movie night, so. Figure it out. So thanks for those invites, guys.
Short film, maybe you can.
Half a dance, half.
Yeah.
Bring your daughter there.
She'll be so excited.
Uh, awesome. Board members around the table, Ms. Rosback.
Excited about Quinn's Closet at North. Thank you, that was very kind of you to name that after her. Um, a little bittersweet since she's a senior, um, but so excited about the, uh, students who will be carrying on that, the project. I, I really appreciate the, the, um, students who will be doing that for Quinn. So, it's not too late to make the donations. Um, you have until Friday morning, when someone who volunteers for Quinn will be collecting everything and bringing that all over to North. I'm excited to see that. I, I really appreciate everyone who's donated for, for this, for Quinn, um, and very excited about the musical. Been going for the last however many years and I always know that they're going to be great, so very excited.
Congratulations to Quinn and have her come back next year, just to supervise.
They will be great without her, but it'd be fun to, it's fun to have her back to.
It's a subtle way to have her go to college nearby.
Good point, yes. I'll see if I can convince her.
There you go, there you go. Uh, just a quick thank you to Jessie. We had the, uh, you had conferences last night and we had a, a negotiation meeting, finished that, and I really enjoy meeting students, meeting teachers, and there are a fair number of teachers I have not met, so she graciously granted me permission to wander the halls and if teachers didn't have parents involved, I'd pop in and say hi and introduce myself and get out of the way and, and, but thank you for letting me do that. It's, I really, really enjoy meeting not only the teachers, but the families.
Um, just, I guess I want to do a little shout-out to all of the fall athletes and teams and everything. I know it may be late on that, but congrats to all of the teams and individuals and how well they did. And since we're talking about gratitude, I'm going to say thanks to all the teachers, I guess. I haven't done that in a while and feel like they just need a little thank you for, I know a lot of them just made it through conferences and that can get a little long, so thanks for all you do. I know it's not easy, so I'm not doing it, so, thanks.
Mr. Kow?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Tracy said about the, uh, accomplishments of the athletic teams and individuals as well. Uh, and I'd like to congratulate Seth on his amount of what you won at your conference there. It was, uh, nice to hear that, to know that you're appreciated, and Shay, of course, has been congratulating. Enough, I don't want his head to get any bigger, so. But, um, and then thanks to Ken and Patsy for their donation, that was very thoughtful. Finally, uh, I won't be able to go to the movie night, nor the dance, because I'm going to be in the cities with the delegate assembly on December fifth, and we do have, uh, it was interesting, the book with the resolutions came out. And our resolution, um, recommendation was to oppose our resolution by the GR team, but I've been in discussions with them and some of the staff members up there, and I believe that we can amend our resolution so that they will accept it and hopefully, um, recommend it for passage. And it's a simple, simple amendment, just removing, I believe, the word volunteer. So instead of saying all voluntary pre-K programs, it'll be all pre-K program students will be counted in the student count, so that would probably involve more individuals, so it would increase our amount a little bit more. So we'll see how that goes and we'll let you know if we get some success on that resolution.
Nothing for me?
Just listening to all the great stuff that's going on in this district is just awesome all the time, and congratulations to everybody. The tome that Bill held up, I got, I got to participate in a, in a video thing last night, going through all of the resolutions, and I think that there's some possible solutions for some of the issues in St. Peter and other school districts this year, so hang on, good news coming.
The tough part's getting it through the legislature.
Yeah, well, yeah, we can do that.
Any items that were not covered that any of the committees would like to mention? We all got a little airtime already, but.
Well, we have meetings scheduled with teachers, um, Monday, and then the following Monday with office support, I believe it is, and then, uh, Thursday before we go to the delegate assembly with, uh, the pairs, so. We're inching along in all three groups.
Yeah, I guess to that point, I, I appreciate everyone who's participating in that process, both on, from the school board side, uh, the superintendent's side, the negotiation side, um.
The business office.
Business office. Like, you don't see, but there are, there are a lot of meetings and it takes up a lot of evenings of time away from maybe people who have young families and that can be, that's a big ask, it's a big, um, commitment and I recognize that and I, I appreciate that, and that's part of the, part of the sausage being made, so. Thank you.
All right, we have upcoming meetings, uh, some of the committee meetings that were just listed. We will be together again on December third for a study session. Uh, MSBA will be joining us, uh, as part of their, the follow-up to their support during the search. This is the transition conversation that they do, the workshop, which I think will be really good. And then we've got a couple other committee meetings before. We are back together for a regular school board meeting on Wednesday, December seventeenth. And a special note, uh, we do the annual truth and taxation presentation that evening, and legally, that cannot start until after six PM, so our meeting will start at six PM that night, as opposed to the usual five o'clock. Set your alarms. Yep. Awesome. Although the worst that happens is you're an hour early, right? We're good, yeah. All right, would motion and entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. This happened last time, too.
Second. All those in favor. Meeting is adjourned.
You could just go, okay, meeting adjourned. You have that power.